Tonight, we have, it is important for the community to hear our candidates are running for the board, their vision for the district. So the Shelton Education Association, we just wanted to offer this time for them to come out and share their few questions and tell us about themselves. So my name is Ron Goodell, I'm the president of Shelton Education Association, and again, thank you for coming out. We have two positions open this, here in just a month, November. We have District Three, and District Three is Brenda Hershey and Jason Alvarado. Jason is currently in a master's program that just started a week ago, and to get away from that would be pretty tough. So Jason has prepared on video his answers to the questions, so when we get to those responses, we'll look here. And then we have an at-large position, and we have Ross Gallagher and Jim Carterhand running for the at-large position. So the format's gonna be, they're gonna have three minutes to introduce themselves, and then we have three questions prepared, and they're going to have a couple minutes to respond to each of those questions. And that's our format. So, that's our plan, and...
Timer. Timer. Thirty seconds, I'll hold up the yellow sheet for you guys.
We're a crystal timer right here. So, and it's going to go, we're gonna have Brenda Hershey, she's gonna start with her introduction, it's gonna go to Jason, and then we'll have Ross, and then Jim, and we'll just continue that format through the question. So, Brenda, here's the mic.
Thanks for coming tonight. Like you said, I'm Brenda Hershey, and I think my life experience qualifies me for this position, and I think it helps explain why I want the job. Education was my ticket out of poverty. I grew up in a coal mining town in West Virginia. In my home, until I was in school, we had two books. We had The Boxcar Children and the New Testament. We didn't even have the Old Testament. When I started to school, I had really dedicated teachers, and my mother was extremely serious about education. And I think that provided the foundation for me to advance. I went on and got a bachelor's in business administration from the University of Maryland, and then later, my masters in, oh, my bachelor's in, at the University of Maryland, and a master's in business administration at Syracuse University. I worked for more than two decades as a financial manager and budget analyst, supervising staff that provided oversight for multimillion dollar programs. And I also taught at the Army Management Staff College, directing and developing and presenting courses on financial management, human resource management, and strategic planning. Today, I'm a retired grandmother of 20, and I find myself with the time to do this job. None of our grandchildren are here in Shelton School District, they're scattered all over the United States. And I'm interested in the improvement and to be able to influence, maximizing the learning experience for our children here in the school district. I think that just as my ticket out of poverty was education, I think that is what's gonna turn things around for our community, and certainly for our children. And I think it is done one child at a time. I would, I'd like to have this job, and like I said, I have the time to do this job at this time in my life. Thank you.
Alright, so now we're going to hear from Jason.
My name is Jason Alvarado. I'm sorry that I'm not able to be there in person with you this evening, as it might have been explained to you already, I'm currently pursuing my master's degree in public administration from the Evergreen State College. Unfortunately, tonight is a class night for me, and as much as I'd like to, I can't be in two places at once. So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to at least participate in this forum virtually. I'd love to answer any additional questions you might have, based on what you hear this evening. I've left contact information available for you to take with you, or also you can visit my website at www.jasonalvarado.com.
Alright, we'll wait for question one. And now, to Ross Gallagher.
Thank you. Thank everyone for attending this. You know, I've been doing this a few times, and it's nice to see people come out, take an interest in the district. My name is Ross Gallagher. I've lived in the Shelton area for 46 years. I worked at Simpson Railroad for 39 years. I've served as citizen to Mason County as an elected official for 15 years. 11 years as a school director for the Shelton School District, and four years as elected Mason County Commissioner. I have two children that attended Shelton Schools, and graduated, and went on to graduate from the University of Washington. That isn't a offense on you, on that. But after my elected service, I continued serving the community. I'm the current chair of the Community Center Association, a board member on Mason Matters, and also a board member on the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board. And I just completed my term as president of the Shelton Police Club. When I was a Mason County Commissioner, I helped create the MTA Board, the current makeup, the current governing structure of MACOM, and also the Hospital District Number Two and the Arts Team Point Sewer and Water. I know government. I know how to get through the good times and the bad times, because I was there. And I'm serving, I'm willing to serve the citizens of both Shelton School District and Mason County.
Well, good evening. As the other candidate said, thank you for coming tonight and giving us an opportunity to talk with you about what we'd like to do. If we're elected to this position, I think that being a school board member is actually one of the more important decisions, one of the more important positions that exists today. I think that the future of our country depends on what you do. The reason that I'm running is because I feel like... I prepared a bunch of notes, and I'm gonna scrape from those. The reason that I'm running is because the traditional schooling system didn't work for me. And when I graduated from high school in 1969, I barely graduated. I couldn't read very well, I couldn't do long division, I couldn't put the, if somebody asked me to structure a sentence, I couldn't structure a sentence. I didn't, I didn't know very much. And I spent the rest of my adult life trying to compensate for that and to learn the things that I didn't learn when I had the opportunity. I don't blame anybody but myself. But I do know that there are ways of learning that the traditional method didn't work for me, and I could have learned in perhaps a different method. And I learned that when I went to Evergreen State College. I've been to many colleges over the years, trying to pick up the pieces and learn as I've gone along, but I went to Evergreen State College and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology with a minor in education. And I actually learned how to write and put a whole paragraph together that makes sense to most people, and I thought that was pretty impressive. But I learned there that there are other ways to learn, and I got very excited about I'll say this, that just what qualifies me, I'm a father of six children, I've been married 41 years, I have nine grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. I've been a businessperson all of my life, I'm responsible for hiring and employing hundreds of people, and responsible for hundreds of millions of dollars of transactions over the years, and my time is up.
Alright, so question number one, let's start with Brenda. What are the components of a successful school district?
I think the number one component of a good school district is quality teachers. And I also think that you need to have a safe and secure environment. You need to have good facilities and a safe environment for both the teachers and the children. I think that a successful school district puts the kids first. And I believe that there's a widespread belief throughout the school district that all children can learn. I think that continuous learning has to occur within the administration and staff to constantly be improving. And I think there's gotta be efficient use of resources, or else you won't have support from the taxpayers and the public. But the bottom line is that if the children who are, who are passing through this system aren't equipped for the adult world, for careers, and to be good citizens, then we would be a failure. So that's, that's the real test. Are we, are we producing people who can move on into the adult world and live well?
Okay. Again, the question is, what is your vision? Now, what are the components of a successful school district?
Question number one, what are your qualifications and why are you seeking this position? Education is my full-time job. I currently support IT operations at the Office of the Superintendent of Public Construction. This supervisor position requires me to stay current on nearly all aspects of K-12 education, including both state...
So I'm gonna cut Jason off for a minute. We're just gonna play his through, so he's got question one, his introduction, and then he's gonna respond to the question. Components of a successful school district.
...initiatives and national trends. I'm seeking this position because I have a desire to use my knowledge, skills, and abilities to help improve the Shelton School District. My district has some major challenges in the coming years. Voters are gonna be asked to pass a levy renewal in early 2014, and likely, a construction bond soon thereafter. Teachers are already burdened with additional responsibilities brought on by T-PED, and will be asked to further implement additional Common Core state standards next year. This is to say nothing of the board's plan for reconfiguration, which undoubtedly will disrupt all school buildings within our district. I think it's important to pause and think about the goals, and how our decisions help or hinder those goals. As a person who is data-driven decision-maker, I'm uncomfortable with driving this process of reconfiguration based on assumptions and opinions. I think the discussion on reconfiguration is currently moving too fast with too little information. For me, again, this is a question of data-driven policymaking and determining what's best for students. The goals and the challenges need to be clearly communicated and alternatives explored before an implementation plan is formulated. I fall back on this motto, "In God we trust, everyone else bring data." Question number two, what are the components of a successful school district? Well, the easy answer is great teachers, and of course, along with excellent classroom support from both staff and administration. While certainly one of my goals as a school board director to provide increased support in the classroom, is not the metric by which I will measure whether or not our district is successful. Instead, I intend to look at student achievement, particularly student growth. A static look at test scores on student assessments does not give a full picture of how all our students are performing. Rather, a statistical comparison of students within a peer group statewide can help us visualize not only the rate of learning growth, but how students are achieving year over year, and how those achievements compare to other students with similar characteristics. Just like comparing student performance within their relative peer groups paints a better picture of student achievement, we can do the same for our performance as a district. Traditionally, the Shelton School District has relied on comparing ourselves to the state average. I actually have two problems with this. The first is that our district is far from representing the average district. In Shelton, we have a higher percentage of poverty as measured by our free and reduced lunch counts, we have a higher percentage of English language learners, and we have a lot more diversity than the rest of the state. I intend to compare our district amongst our representative peer groups based on some of these similar characteristics. In this way, we can eliminate factors that are atypical, and through collaboration with these districts, hope to find new strategies and methods for what works for our students. The second problem I have, like I mentioned, is that we should not be striving to meet the average. It is important that we set high expectations for our students to achieve. I intend to foster a culture of continuous improvement, one where we are constantly looking at ways to progress and the challenges, and challenge our students to be the best they can be. Ultimately, empower them to be self-sufficient community members.
I'll go back to the first one, and I'll keep it short. There's nothing better in your heart than volunteering to serve as a school director. And on components, with facilities, dedicated staff. However, the most important component is having high expectations in our students to succeed. If the school board and the staff do not demand high expectations from our students, they will not succeed. When students see this, they will be motivated to succeed.
Do I get his leftover two minutes? Successful school districts focus first and foremost on student achievement and learning. They have a theory of action for how to affect improvements, and they establish clear goals. They enact comprehensive, coherent reform policies. Educators in successful school districts accept personal responsibility for improving student learning and receive support to help them succeed. They are committed to professional learning at all levels and provide multiple, meaningful learning opportunities. They use data to guide their improvement strategies and regularly monitor progress and intervene if necessary. Successful school districts provide for the board and the teachers to have direct communication. They place teachers at the top of the management pyramid, while administrators become facilitators to help teachers accomplish their mission. They give teachers the necessary authority to match their responsibility. And last, but most importantly, they have parental involvement in their children's education. Now, I know that in our district, we have PBD, Parental Deficit Disorder, and you're saddled with an incredible responsibility of not only educating our children, but in many cases, being parents to our children. I think that that is gonna take generations to change. I wish it weren't so, but I think until then, we have to recognize that that's gonna be part of the thing that we have to deal with, and we have to provide you with everything you need to accomplish that. So, I think you have a really tough job, and I think that you need people who support you and help you and facilitate what it is that you do.
Question two, what is your vision for the Shelton School, for the future of Shelton School District? Vision for the future of Shelton School District?
I see continuous increases in student achievement. All third graders are reading at grade level or better. There is such an increase in the demand for advanced math classes that we have to add extra classes and bring in additional teachers to teach these math classes. There's a significant increase in on-time graduation, and there's an increase in the number of students who graduate that go on to technical school or college. But I see a decrease also. A decrease in the number of parents who choose to take their children out of the school district. And if those increases that I just mentioned are occurring, those parents aren't gonna want to take their children out of the school district. They're gonna want them to be here. I see improved communication between the board and supervisor, the administration, and the teachers, and the community. The school district has better communication with the community. And I think that if we have a solid strategic plan that, to maximize student learning, that we will have an efficient use of our resources, and we will have support from the community. That's my vision. A little optimistic, maybe, but hey, I think big.
Thank you.
Question number three, what is your vision for the future of the Shelton School District? My number one goal is to increase our graduation rate. Only 62% of students in the class of 2012 were able to graduate on time. Unfortunately, that's the 11th worst graduation rate in our state. In order to improve the statistic, I intend to focus on the ABCs of on-time graduation. First, A stands for attendance. Research has shown that students who are missing more than 50% of their scheduled class time tend to graduate late or drop out completely. B stands for behavior. Even one incident of out-of-school suspension has been shown to be a common factor shared amongst high school dropouts. And C is course completion. Students who are behind in credits tend to get discouraged as they get further and further behind. It is a student no good to continue following traditional means of earning credits when they have no chance of catching up to their peers. In each of these cases, intervention is required. In addition to our current RTI model, the district needs to be open to new interventions and programs for students to stay on track to graduate. I would also like to encourage a greater amount of parental involvement. Research shows a strong parental participation in higher education, excuse me, results in higher educational aspirations, and produces more motivated students. This holds true for students at all grade levels, regardless of the parent's education, income, or background, including minority students. I believe that this is truly the key to closing the opportunity gap. Focusing on fostering a strong learning community is one of my main priorities.
Can we get so far?
My vision is to be part of a school board that works for all children. A board that accepts the financial status for child rich or poor, and helps a child graduate. We educate children about end here in college. However, not every student will attend college. Some students will attend some sort of trade or technical school. Some students will serve our country by being a member of the armed services, and some will join the workforce right after graduation. Our job is preparing our students to go up any path they choose after graduation, and also succeed in their lives.
I think a vision should be fairly short, because I was just trained that way, to keep the vision short, sweet, and to the point. I envision our children learning their subject matter at an 80% level or better before moving on to the next learning level. I envision teachers creating and innovating and enjoying their jobs every day. And I envision parents feeling strongly that their children are in our great hands and learning up to their capabilities. I know that that's a big challenge, but I'm one of those guys that doesn't quit. In fact, if you want me to accomplish something, tell me that we can't do it. That's what I did when we built the submarine over here. They told me we couldn't do it, and I sold, and we built the world's first push-in luxury submarine. Took a lot of work, took a lot of working together, but we did it, because I had a vision, the vision caught on, and we accomplished that vision, and we can do it. We can do this. Can you just imagine having classes where your children are coming in ready, willing, and able to learn at the level you're teaching? Wouldn't that be amazing, all of the children in your class? What an incredible thing that would be. I think that we should try to accomplish that, and I have a vision for that.
And our last question is, what role do you see the Shelton School Board having in our community?
I see four major roles. The first is vision, looking into the future and being able to come up with a strategic plan and process to achieve that to-be state. You know, what facilities are required, what level of students, and to be able to forecast that. The second is structure. The school board plays a role in the structure, has a major role in the structure, through the financial management process and oversight. How much should the levies be? What size should the budget be? The third is accountability. The school board has the responsibility of setting the goals, and then going back and evaluating. How, how have those goals been achieved, and are there remedies that are required if they haven't been? And then, the fourth role is advocacy. The school board should be the champion for public education in this community, at the state and federal level. And that should be reaching out, particularly in this community, to diverse elements of the community. And in addition to those four roles, I think the school board member has to have the time to get in and study the subjects, and to be able to reach out to the community, and be prepared for the meetings.
Question number four, what role do you see the school board having in our community? I say first and foremost, we need to be leaders. If we hope to grow and improve, we need to set high standards for ourselves and our students. These need to be realistic goals that we can actually strive to obtain. And further, this can't just be a list that we dust off each year to see how we did, but rather, needs to be goals that we are thinking about with every decision that we make. Our community depends on the Shelton School District to produce well-educated adults that are career and college-ready. As the only district in the local area which offers... As the only district in the local area which offers high school grade levels, we also have a responsibility to stay engaged with the greater learning community in order to ensure that our out-of-shirt students are coming into our district ready to learn at grade level. I also think we can do more to foster better community, school, and parent partnerships. As I said before, strong parental involvement is important, but I also believe that the greater community has a vital role to play as well. You've heard the old proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child." This is no less true today. We should strive to engage our community at every opportunity possible. As servant leaders and stewards of our schools, we owe it to them to seek input and participation not only when we're asking for financial support, but in all matters affecting student achievement. To quote the National Education Association President Dennis Van Broekel, "Parents, family, educators, and communities, there's no better partnership to ensure that all students pre-K to high school have the support and resources they need to succeed in school and in life." Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to participate in this forum via video. Again, please feel free to direct any questions you have to me via phone, email, or through my website. The address again is www.jasonamorato.com.
All right.
Thank you. Shelton School Board's role is to promote quality education. What it means is to have a good, strong school in our schools and our community. When I arrived at the job market some fifty years ago, mass carbs cost three thousand or less. Quality houses were somewhere between eight and sixteen thousand. Hamburgers cost nineteen cents. But now things are different. This is why it's important to elect a school director who has the commitment, the fire in the belly, to make our community great and provide quality education for the children of Shelton School District. I'm ready, I'm willing to work hard for everyone to succeed in our community. Thank you.
I think that school board should be carefully listening to all stakeholders. I think the board should be using their authority to facilitate an educational environment that accomplishes the vision they set forth earlier. I think the board should make sure teachers have their voice in the whole process and have significant input in the way we educate. The board should be strong leaders with a vision and a commitment to an educational environment that is excellent. I'm not a politician, I've never run for office before. I'm doing this because I believe that I truly have something to offer, that my experiences over my lifetime have, if any of you want to hear some incredible stories, I'd love to tell you about them. I'd like to bring the things that I've learned from those experiences, both the successes and the failures, to bear on this job. I'm completely ready and able to do whatever it takes to make certain that our schools are excellent and that you have jobs that you enjoy going to every day and the accomplishment that you feel is something that radiates from your face. And I've seen teachers be pretty sad before and I have a wife who works for the school district and sometimes I have to sort of peel her off the wall when she comes home from the challenges that she faces. And so I do have some idea of what you have to deal with and I want you to know that I'm on your side. I'll always listen to you, I'll always hear what you have to say, and I'll place your opinions above most because you're the ones that are doing education, you're on the front lines, and you need to be listened to. Thank you very much for listening to us tonight and don't forget to come out and vote for me and thank you.
I appreciate you coming up too. I've worked in the district for quite a while. I was telling a couple of candidates that I came in 1990, so this is my twenty-third year teaching and most people have never taught on me, but now I get to start saying how many years I taught, start feeling old. But we have a great school district, we have great teachers. I like leadership or what I have, speaking to the teachers and hearing what their vision is and about what's going on in their classroom. We got a little picture of what our candidates, their vision is for the district and some of their goals. And I do, I encourage you to get out and vote, it's an important thing. It's our civic responsibility and I think we need to do that. I think all the candidates are willing to, you know, if you have further questions, contact them. We have some things going on in our district. We have a levy coming up this winter, probably a bond in the future. So we have some things going on and we need us to support our board as well and let them know and communicate what our concerns are. But we also have a district that we're doing a lot of good things and we need to celebrate that. We have great things going on, we have students succeeding in all buildings and we have good administrators. So we need to celebrate that. We need to remember as the educators that are out here and community members to let people know what's going on in our district. So I've been here a long time and that's my message whenever I talk to someone in the district. I have three kids, one that's gone now and two more in the district. I think we do a quality job with the staff that we have, with the leadership that we have. So get out there, vote, talk to those that didn't come, it's important, we need to do that. And again, just thank you for showing up tonight and we're finished and we're off we go. Candidates, probably stick around if you want to talk to them, but thank you again for coming tonight and for this dedication to our district. Thanks again.